You have a form, public form, individuals may address the city council. About items not included on the agenda, speakers are required to state their name and address for council records and limit the remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within jurisdiction, that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file, take it under advisement, refer matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct a matter to be placed on an upcoming agenda. Anyone who wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on. City Administrator position profile, salary range. Gary?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to work with you on this project. We are at a point now where we are nearing the spot where we can post the position. And I'm here tonight to talk with you about a variety of items that some need in action, some not. So I guess the way I would like to proceed through this is, first of all, talk about the draft position profile. There's a few items in the profile that could end up changing based on other discussions you have, but first of all, I just, if there's any general feedback or any specific concerns, issues, suggestions that you have about the profile, I have. Lori's been very helpful in helping do some editing of it, so that was helpful to have her assistance in the process. But now it's before you to see if there are any issues or concerns that you have.
Gary, I just say that I, when I've said in the past, I've gone through a lot of them through superintendent positions, which me as kind of the senator's decision, and I like the contents of this. I like what you described, and try to sell the community as part of this, and so I thought it was very well done.
Thank you. Does that mean I can leave?
Yeah, get to work with you. I'll get posted yet tonight.
Well, if there aren't, if there aren't any other comments on that, that is the primary advertising document. It will be posted on the David Drawn website, will be distributed significantly through two organizations and groups for publication. I haven't even talked to city staff yet, but usually we put it on the city website as well. I'm sure that can be accommodated also. So, but this is the primary document that's going to be out there in circulation.
How many applications do you expect to get?
Yeah, good question. The trend I've seen recently is between 30 and 50. I would guess this position would be in that range somewhat, maybe middle or upper part of that range, but difficult to tell. I've actually had a few inquiries already about it. You know, Dan has talked to folks about it, he's encountered them. Our website has also had a little thing that says "coming soon," and you know, people have already tuned into it, so when the posting takes place, it'll pick up pretty rapidly.
Does the ICMA get this?
Yes. Yeah, ICMA is an international city county manager, so, management association. Very, very good spot for advertising positions. It's international, but it's really, I mean, we're not obviously recruiting from international population, but it's where everybody goes who is even thinking about looking for a city administrator position, actually throughout the country, but very, very good resource. But yes, it will be possible. Okay, should I move on from that? All right. The next thing, just a little thing to talk about pertaining to salary. Right now, the salary range for this position, I shouldn't say right now, if you use the May schedule, which has, includes a, I believe it's a grade 10, which is the, could be the city administrative position. You don't have to use that, but if you did, the range there is 88,266 to 100,00303. As I studied the market a little bit, my feeling was a little bit different than what is presently in that schedule. I think the starting point of that schedule is dead on, and I think that that's a great spot for it. However, the top end struck me as being on the lower end of the maximum for this position here. However, so I'm recommending to go up to 108, but it's easy for me to recommend. You know, I'm not reporting to the citizens here, I'm not, you know, a politician, I'm not at the table, you are all charged with making that decision. But ultimately, tonight, I would like to resolve the range with you to see where you all would like to come down on that.
Well, I looked over this little pagey half with a lot of different salaries and ranges, and I think we're right in there with what you recommended. I tend to agree, I think, once again, you're on a level to be similar to a superintendent, and I think some of the superintendents' wages are even higher than this. And so, Eddie, you know, it's not that we have to give them that when they come in, but I just think, I think the tighter you make it, you could rule out potentially some quality applicants that may, I don't know, if Dan, if you're experienced with that, when you look at that, when you're looking for a job, and you see the scale falling somewhere below where you're even interested in, you still apply and see if you can negotiate it.
Yeah, I think you do that. I, you know, as you just briefly mentioned, if you don't go to that top of that range, that's the salary range, the person applying, you know, they look at that, of course, but I think they have to understand that when they're negotiating a contract, that you're going to be there, you know, right from the get-go, so. But you look at, I think, what a community is comfortable with paying, and if the range is within the comfort range of the person applying, you know, it's, we're going to take that application. I did, as Gary said, I talked to him earlier today, and I did have some conversation with Minnesota City County Managers Association Conference, was at Grand View at the end of last week, and I did have a chance to really kind of promote the job. You know, a lot of the younger candidates, you know, one of the comments, those of us not in the 494, 694, inside of that loop, I don't want to even apply. Now, other people are interested in outstate jobs. Now, the Brainerd position is still open, and that was up to 115. Their population's about 14,000 or so, so, you know, I think that the range is probably about right. You know, it's, again, as Gary said, it's up to the community, you know, things, and it's very position. You know, I think back to my position in Brainerd when I had it, and one of the council members said, "Well, that's not what the man on the street pays." I said, "Well, you're not hiring the man on the street. If you want to pay something a lot less, then hire a man, the person on the street." He happened to say the man on the street. That's not what you're hiring, you're hiring someone with, you know, five, six, seven years of experience, a professional administrator for a committee, and a $15 million business. You know, you got to think of it, you know, start thinking in those terms. Now, I think the wages are where it needs to be. You'll see, when you start, if you're not getting the number of applications and the quality, I mean, you're going to find out whether or not you need to make some adjustments. But I don't, I don't think as well. I think greater Minnesota, if you've got, you know, a person that's in a community of a couple thousand people or less, you know, this will be a pretty nice step for them.
Looks like there are negotiations. Redwood Falls, their maximum range was 113,000, but the current person's getting 134,000, so for a smaller community, you must see something extra on that person.
The possibility is, as a typo too, I didn't, you know, this is pulled from the Minnesota City's website, somebody could have entered that wrong, but there could be an unusual circumstance where that individual that is beloved by the council, and they just will do whatever it takes. I mean, I have no idea the circumstances with that situation.
Or extra duties.
Could be, could be, yep. Shared, you know, a dual position.
And that's a good point, Frank. In some occasion, maybe they have a real strong, they call it port authority or EDA, and, you know, they kind of have their own revenue source as well, so they can, you know, help augment the pay. I know the Baxter one, I think, is in there, two of them, that's like 135, that one's right. And I know that's what that person made, frustrating as it was for me. When I was sitting at 108.
He's letting go though, right?
But they had, you know, there's probably a good reason for that, so.
And I think it does a great job when it's there, when we start boarding up all the box stores.
Yeah.
So that, that seems to be acceptable range?
I got that somewhere on your chart as well.
Okay. Okay. Well, the next thing to talk about then is a little bit about the interview process and the timeline. I put in the cover letter some of the components for an interview that you may wish to consider. Tonight, you don't need to make any decisions on that, that can come later, as far as what are the exact components that you would like to include in the interview process. What I would like to try and firm up tonight, and sometimes this changes, but as you saw on the profile, I actually list when the interview dates would be. And I like to do that because that way candidates know right up front, here is what the city is looking at, here are the dates, now, you may end up needing to change one of those, and we can do that. But I do, I do feel pretty strongly about trying to have dates in mind. And I say dates, it doesn't have to be a two-day process, but again, depending on how many, how many components you wish to include, sometimes it almost has to be a two-day process to get through it. For example, if you wish to individually speak with each of the candidates, there's eight of you and however many candidates, I mean, just that process alone would take several hours to complete. So, you know, I think the likelihood is that probably be a two-day process here. At least that's how, that's how I would see it. But again, that's your call. So, I had just, I mean, I threw a date in there of our two dates, July 30th and July 31st. I don't know if those work. Do you want to talk about other options? I'm interested in your feedback.
Well, I hate to sound extremely easy supporting once again, but to me, you guys are the experts on the process, and I, we could go around the table and ask everybody a date, and they'd probably give different ones. So, you know, to come up with those as ballpark, I see nothing wrong with those, because you're looking, you went through the whole timeline on what we need to do, and the amount of time you think it's going to get done, and I see nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, I know, at the end of the month, so.
It's a Thursday, Friday, so that's the only thing of the weekend, so that makes it convenient for some people that are coming with travel to have it.
You know, there's no magic. Wednesday, Thursday sometimes work good, Thursday, Friday. I, you know, I avoid Tuesdays typically, and most councils meet on Tuesdays, and if you're bringing in people from other places, they may have a conflict with a council meeting. But I, I don't think there will be issues with candidates. Again, when you have it this far out, they just need to plan accordingly. So I don't think there'll be any issues with candidates saying, you know, Friday doesn't work, for example. If there is with you, that's another, you know, that's another story.
A comment over my career, frankly, I didn't interview a lot, which is kind of the way it worked out, which was my sales job a long time. You know, I didn't do a two-day interview. The two days depends upon what, what you all want to do during those two days. Mainly, it depends on many you want Gary to present to you. If it's five people, you probably can do that in a day. Depends upon what you want to do with them. And the other is, I don't want your experiences, Gary, as far as, are you paying people to put them up for a day?
Well, that's another subject to chat about tonight, is whether or not you wish to do some travel reimbursement. It's your call, there's no right or wrong answer to that. Some communities that I've worked with have said, "We absolutely will not do it, people want the job, fine, they'll get here, they'll pay for their lodging." You know, I think in many cases, even if it's a one-day process, people may have to pay for lodging, you know, even if they're coming from other parts of the state. So, but that's, that's up to you as well, but I, you know, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that subject as well, because that question always comes up, and, from candidates, whether or not there's reimbursement. Some choose not even to take it, but, you know, for some, they'll ask about it, I'm certain.
Well, my concern is, you get a attractive candidate from California, are we going to pay the airfare and four nights in a hotel? And, you know, I know that's extreme, and the chances of that happening are very slim, but as we say, yeah, we're going to pay expenses to get you here, you know, that's.
I would cap it, if you wanted to do it, my recommendation would be to cap it at a certain dollar amount, that you say up to 300, 400, whatever, you would be willing to reimburse, as long as they present the receipts for meals, receipts for lodging, et cetera. But I would not have it open-ended, because the very scenario you described, you know, could come into play, and you could have a $2,000 cost. I would not recommend having it open-ended. I should have said that in my introductory comment about that. If you wish to do it, I would absolutely recommend you cap it. And it's an up-to, it's not something you just give to people, it's up to that amount, they have to prove that they've expended whatever.
Well, who else would be paying for a vacation? They might not even have the intent of taking the job.
In the summer, in July.
My point is, if they're, if they're really interested in coming up here, they, they will come up here, whether they get reimbursed for their stay or their trip or not, if they're really interested, they'll make that choice, make their combination.
Well, I was thinking, couldn't we, and I know we could, but in the hard involved, they paid their way to get here, and if they need an overnight hotel, they gave access for the hotel. They're throwing that out there, you know, somebody's coming from a long ways. They're not going to just take a pay area, they're offering a night in hotel. Next time, let's remember the investment, for sure, courtesy of the candidates.
Plus, it gives them the opportunity to see the community a little bit.
Yep. It's a lot of stick around toward the dominance, you know, by, by doing that, you're offering.
If they're just going to have a scheduled time, and it's one day, and you think we're going to get between 30 and 50 applicants, them for nothing. It sounds like we have a decent-sized pool, and if we don't get a big enough pool, 30 or 50 that we have, and we need to adjust that, I'm fine, but I guess upfront for me, if somebody wants the job, it's a pretty high-profile position, I would expect, if they're interested enough, they're not going to be worried about travel and lodging.
I would, you know, not to, not to debate that point, because I think, like I said, some people wouldn't even take it if you offered it. I would say, though, that it'll be more than a one-interview day. I mean, the day for these folks is going to be full, or the two days will be full, if you do things like have some participation from department heads, a city tour, a lunch with you all, as well as department heads, the individual interview with each of you, and then a formal interview with the full council. So it, I mean, it's going to be a full day, and I'm not debating the rest of that, I just wanted to point out that it's more than just a.
Well, I could be convinced the night of hotel, it's in order.
Yeah.
Well, in my opinion, I wouldn't pay them a dime. They want the job, they can come up here and look for it. I mean, I just, I mean, we have talked about this, and they run contrary to where Gary's at, but this, this will be a great job for someone, and if they have to stay the night, I mean, I have to do that, I went to Brainerd, I stayed with my brother. My interview was Saturday morning, when I came up Friday and toward the finish.
How does the school handle superintendent?
Every time I was part of the, we paid expenses, we capped it, like Gary said, I can't remember where we capped it, we put them up in the hotel. Oh, we had someone from Colorado, so, that's where the airfare, we came, it looks like it's all, I have to look at the cap, I can't remember where it was.
That's not going to ever go back there now.
I'm more into out, thinking about hotel rooms and not travel or anything, or going Dan's way. Because, you know, if you want the job, it's like every job I've ever gotten, I put up the expenses and I went.
If you want to manage yourself, take a little responsibility.
Well, and if you're looking at potentially bringing five people in, that's what we bring in, you know, we're not talking about building Redwood Falls, and that's what's happening on us, for three, five people, or three people, whatever it comes up, I just think that shows that we're in it to win it. And I don't see that as a grand investment to replace one of the most important jobs, or the most important job that we have.
I could at this point, too, I mean, based on the conversation you're having here, I could say that, you know, there's no assurance of any reimbursement, if there was anything, it, it could be for a hotel stay, and then you can decide that when I bring the semifinalists before you, and they're not going to be here, but I'll be here presenting them. And you could make a call at that point and say, you know, we'll do that, or we won't, but at least it would give, you know, I'm getting some feedback already about the direction where you're headed with this, so, I mean, I, I'm kind of comfortable with where it's at right now. I wouldn't make any promises either way, but I would explain it just the way I did, if you'd be, if you're okay with that for now, and you can decide that point later. Okay, okay. The other thing then is the job description, that was included in your packets as well. This is a, based on a draft that was done a few years ago. I went through it, and then I forwarded it on to Dan and to Lori to review. They had several comments about the job description, but it's a great time when you're hiring somebody new to have a new, not a new, but an updated job description for the position, and I also, you know, readily share that with potential candidates as well that are, that are coming in. So that's the other item that I would be interested in receiving some feedback on, and then at your regular meeting, ask that you take action on, just to.
Pardon? On the job description tonight?
Yes, yes.
Well, Dan, we put you on the spot, but I'll let you do then.
Yeah, we, I reviewed it a couple times, we talked about it internally, I think it looks great.
Any other questions, Mark? I'd like to see.
Yeah. So maybe not, just to summarize then, and if you want me to stay for your regular meeting, I'll gladly do that as well, but it would be to approve the profile, to approve the salary range, I shouldn't say to, I'm putting words in your mouth, to, to consider the profile, to consider the salary range, and really, the part of the timeline is just the interview days to make, you don't really need to act on that. I mean, I, I'll put them in there based on the conversation, and then to consider the job description. Those would be the action items before. And just to follow up then, if you, you know, pending your approval, I will, based on the fact there's very little change here, I will post the position tomorrow, and it'll be widely advertised. I will send you via email some information too, that it's been, just to confirm that it's been advertised, send you the final documents, they'll be, it'll be posted on the David Drawn website tomorrow as well, and I'll coordinate with city staff here to get it out on to your website as well. But that'll take place tomorrow, so.
Once it's gone, can you update us a little bit on how many applicants we're getting?
Yeah, great, great question. I send out, typically I send out a weekly email to the council that just says, "There's X amount of applicants so far, if there's any other news, I'll let you know that as well." But yeah, you'll get a, you'll get a weekly update, starting this week, actually, because it'll be, yeah, tomorrow's Tuesday, there'll be applications that come in immediately.
Good, thank you. It's almost the middle of June, then, it's like.
Yep, yep. Always try to leave it open a bottom line, is my standard practice.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Do you want to tell Scott anything for him?
No?
Don't make any?
You want me to leave?
Yeah, we don't want to.
Go find us.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Onto golf course, Mayor Zelka, here's Dan, everyone, here's Lori.
Yeah, I've updated the memo that I had set previously regarding the golf course, we were talking about eliminating golf advisory board out of the city code, that's section 229, and looking at the duties of the golf advisory board, and incorporating those into the job description for the superintendent, or how other staff might formulate those jobs. We also took a look at the policies that are currently in place regarding the golf course. We found there are three policies, and there should only be one, so you're not searching the policy, but for the golf course. But policy, a new, current policy, 57, has a number of rules and regulations in it, and we'd like to expand that to incorporate policy number 29, which related to private golf course, and then policy number 30, which related to limited memberships. Private golf carts, it talks about the process, how they, how they could bring them onto the site, and who approves those, and all, and a number of those other things. Limited memberships of policy 30 talked about limiting the memberships to no more than 600, well, they had that problem as well. So, we took the policies, tried to incorporate those into one policy rather than three relating to the golf course, it would be called the Golf Course Rules, Regulations, Policies and Procedures. And then we looked at the job description, sent that out to Randy, we looked at it internally, and also sent it to Randy. He got that information back as far as the job description, and had that updated, and then finally, the discussion of a liaison from the council to meet periodically with those that are involved with golf course, including the superintendent, the course director, and engineers, you need supervisor, that person, or city administrator, or members of the extravaganza, or the mess league, or the women's league, or whatever. We did have meeting with a few members of the, with the extravaganza committee, and we also sent it to them, and a number of them are here this evening as far as the policies and procedures go, and took their comments, tried to incorporate those, we did get a couple of comments Friday, took, take a look at those, when talks about is their family, or a senior family, rather than a single senior, or, I don't see a senior family, and there was a couple of the policies that they were wondering about solving, probably. They weren't critical that they need to be adjusted, I don't think, here at this point, but the things that we should be taking a look at, so, I don't agree if you have, or not.
Well, just, my concerns were, as I listen to the public, was communication and follow-through and accountability, and whether they're good, bad, or otherwise. And, uh, whether they're good, bad, or otherwise, um, I think those lines of communication were somewhat blurred. And, and my thought process was if we eliminated the advisory board and went with a liaison, uh, the, the public, golfers, everybody, would have an option to, uh, speak to the liaison directly. Otherwise, it does say in here that they can meet with the mayor or any council person, it's just they don't have to just go to the liaison, because we don't want to cut anybody out of the deal. And, uh, the main part to me was the communication, that there would be whoever the golf course superintendent was, has meetings with all these different groups, we hold them accountable for that. And also presentations to the, uh, entire city council, I believe, four times a year. So the amount of accountability and communication to me, it at least gave us a method to address issues. So that, uh, you want to hear something, after four people spoke about it, it would finally get to one of us. And people have, you know, a kind of a, uh, structure that they can go to. And I don't know if that's, uh, something that the golfers are looking for, or if that's acceptable to them. I think we had, uh, advisory board for thirty months without them meeting, and I know there was, I heard a bunch of different reasons. Uh, but to me, that wasn't working, and I think we need to find a plan, um, that is going to work. And it's going to work for everybody, where we can take everybody's input. And, uh, you know, we're not blaming anything on anybody, we're not saying, uh, this person failed, that person failed. What we're saying is, we need to find a way, uh, to make improvements, changes, or whatever we need to, and then there'd be a process with, meeting with golf course superintendent, whether it be the liaison, and the city administrator, and, uh, Mr. Kimmon. And they would sit down and have meetings separate from the ones outside the council. And once again, communication and follow-through and accountability, I think we all live with that in our jobs, um, every day. And I don't see anything wrong with that. So that's just me talking.
Hey, what's your, Mark?
I have a concern relative to the immediate elimination of the golf advisory board, the section two twenty-nine, without having something to put in its place. Uh, this document pretty much takes care of those concerns, so I'm okay with this at the moment.
Any else questions or concerns?
I'm just kind of thinking out loud, and I, I don't want to take any ways, anything away from Greg Kimmon, but, um, like I said, just thinking out loud, would it make more sense for the superintendent to report directly to the city administrator? Or is there something in that chain that requires him to go through? Right. He's in charge of a city entity.
Yeah, currently, the, the organizational structure has that person reporting to the, the golf course directors or city engineer.
Is there a reason for that? Is there a good reason?
They hold a structure, so. It's not, you know, it's not considered a department head level position, um, but he isn't a major, you know, it's a supervisory position. But as far as who that person reports to, you guys can determine the support organizational structures up to the council.
Is there a benefit or a detriment, either way? The only reason I bring it up the most. Strong opinion on this, on this, you know, maybe we can get some changes, or rectify situations faster.
Just going to have to do a couple of different steps, you know. I, I, I don't know. It's up to you, you know, as far as.
Well, you had a golf course at one time, right? You had a golf course at one time, right?
Yeah.
And?
It was, it was private.
It was private.
And I thought the same thing, Lee, as far as, you know, chain of command, how, you know, how many interruptions do you want, or how many do you need? And I, you know, part of the reason I had suggested it this way is because, like Dan said, that's the way it was. I don't know if he's not a, he is a supervisor, but he's not a department head per se. And that's typically who was meeting with the city administrator, correct, uh, directly to the?
Yeah, I, on most occasions, I mean, there are a ton, a number of times that I had Randy come in, but it's usually Jerry or Greg were, were with him. So it was getting right to me, but it wasn't necessarily going, uh, you start by step. But, I mean, it works, you guys, except for. I don't know, does anybody have any?
I thought, you know, Greg has engineering skills, dealing with, uh, how the operations go on that end, but not the business or financial skills end of it. So, uh, going through them for something like that isn't really, I see, that important. But, you know, any instruction or anything, you know, maintenance or anything like that, I can see going through Greg. Because he has the understanding of all of that, so.
Well, where did Parks come in on this? Was that part of it at one time? Because I, okay, I didn't know if Jerry was, you know, it seemed like Jerry took care of Parks. Uh, he was, oversaw that, and I thought maybe that, I'll add following under that somehow.
Because the golf course is an enterprise fund that never really fell under the parks. And they, how the golf course ended up reporting to that, to the, um, public works director's position was back in the eighties, whenever we had our, our law and law study done. Back then, uh, you know, there were, the city administrator had probably ten or twelve people reporting to him. And it was just too difficult to have that many different people reporting. So they kind of reorganized and ended up with four people reporting, being police chief, the, um, fire chief, the public works director, and then one person from the city hall office. So, um, and, and that was just the fit, where were you going to put the golf course person in the building inspector? Both went to public works, because that, that's just where they fit. So, again, if you want to change that, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Either way, one way or another? So do you have a thought, one way or another?
Either way, however you'd like to, to do it, I'm.
Well, I mean, do you think you have something to offer by having it go through you first? Or is it more of a hindrance to what you do?
I think, you know, in terms of, if we have a full-time administrator and end up in, again, I guess, Dan, I'm just able to do it day-to-day, but if, with the full-time administrator, I think if that aspect of, um, that would be sufficient as well, because then we'll be able to, you know, speak to them on a day-to-day basis and anything that arrives. Whereas now, you know, I can address things a little bit on the spot, but, uh, it's how, how are you going to, like, see it structured?
You know, if you want to, uh, do a few of these things tonight, which I would suggest, you start the ordinance process, and then, uh, adopt the policies, but you hold the job description back, because then you know, like, we changed the reports too. And think about that a little bit, we can take, bring the organizational structure or chart to you at your next meeting, and you can take a look at it, and take it, hold off on that job description for tonight. And that, there's no urgency to do that, you know, seeing to any of it. It's been slow for years, uh, for you and Paul.
Yeah, because I'd like to talk to, I mean, talk to a couple of different, uh, communities with public golf, or city municipal golf courses, and say, it's your structure, not that we have to follow him, but, you know, there's no sense us being the only one that doing it the way we are now, if everybody else is, or reporting to, I've got a good friend who's, um, mayor of Becker, and we had just talked to him this last week. So I would ask him, he told me, uh, their success is much more dismal than was reported. Uh, so, they're really struggling. Maybe I shouldn't steal the ideas from him. We'll see what they do when it's released. So did you want to see if anybody from Extravaganza has any comments on this process, because, uh, is that all right?
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
Um, Al Bowman, Little Falls, uh, for forty-three years. Anyway, uh, I always thought it might help benefit the golf course if we would get that other name, Country Club. Have it called Little Falls Golf Course. Or you could come up with the river connection in there somehow. But I think when you put the Country Club in there, it kind of makes it a private to the public, general public. So that, I would recommend highly to change the name to, other than Country Club.
We actually had that discussion with the Extravaganza, somebody brought that up, it may have been you, Al, and, uh, Dan and I, and, uh, I don't remember who's all in on the discussion, but we had, and Jeremy, and agenda planning, and we were talking about that. And ironically, this last, uh, week, I had a gentleman from out of town who's in my office, he's originally from, told me Brons Boys. And he said that he was talking to a friend, and asked him why they, you know, they go drive past Little Falls, and he asked him why they never golf Little Falls, and he goes, well, that's Country Club, we can't golf there. And I'd said in that same meeting, to me, when you talk Country, Country Club, I think of two things. I think they're going to have steaks there all the time, where you have to, it's fine dining. And the other thing is, that's your going, you have to be a member to get in there. So, you know, we have discussion at length on that, and I think that's, I agree, I think that's something that.
So, we could take that a step further, right? Put municipal right in the name, I mean, it'll remove all doubt.
If you put municipal in the name, um, it, you're, you're, Dean Erdman, Little Falls. If you put municipal in the, in the name of it, it goes to the other end of the spectrum. You're, you're going the other end of it.
Yeah.
Now, you're happy, I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't know about anybody else, but I go places, and I see municipal, I see Country Club, and you're on both ends of the spectrum, you get something in the middle.
Yeah.
It, and then you have to get your name out there.
I'd be easy, Riverside, River's Edge, Golf Course.
That's great, but I think that's taken.
They're, you know, there's.
Well, I, I'd suggest you, you, you do this throughout the season, get this, you know, put a suggestion box out there, talk to.
You guys, uh, get this in front of the council towards the end of the year, get it, get the change made, start it at first of the year, and, and, you know, change all kinds of things to do that, but, and, and make that change about.
And give us the winner to get a, a range.
Yeah, and even when we, uh, get that done, and advertise that, it's a move, um, and people are going to come out and see that, that. I think that's great, I do.
And for others? What page was it, you lost? Anyway, uh, uh, local club policy, no. Anyway, there's, we talked about five sums are, gotta have, uh, permission. I think one of the problems we've had out there is that, and we got to be clear about that six sums cannot play. Or more than five are not allowed on the course. And there have been issues that have been unpleasant out there, because people think that they can place six guys, or whatever. And, uh, I think that there should be a statement in here that more than five golfers on a, uh, oh, that's it. You can't have more than five, period.
So there's something in here.
Yeah, it says here, under number eleven, well, it says, a, a fivesome is a privilege, not a right, check with golf course personnel. So, I mean, I mean, that kind of limits it, if, if a fivesome is a privilege, well, a six of them would be, I'd speak with.
I can tell you that, I'm sure it's happened, the only time I've seen more than five, there was nobody else golfing. So if nobody's coming up behind them, it doesn't matter.
And then out there with only two other people, and people keep passing me up.
And while they're passing you up, then you're doing it right.
Alec? Doug calls from Little Falls, uh, we talked about the advisory board, uh, I've been a member for forty-six, forty-seven years. I was on the original advisory board when Doug Veil was superintendent. And, uh, we met frequently, gave suggestions, we had no political power, so to speak, just gave suggestions. And then Doug took those suggestions to whoever, I don't know who he was reporting to, uh, but nothing ever seemed to get done from the suggestions we made. And, uh, and when Randy took over, uh, pretty much the same thing. I don't think any suggestion that the advisory board came up with were followed through. Uh, whose fault that was, I don't know, but I know they never took those into consideration. So you people considering this now is a real positive thing, that, uh, that the people who are out there concerned about the course, golf Extravaganza Committee for one, will finally get to be heard, and we'd, we'd come up with some positive improvements out there. And, uh, we do need some positive improvements, so having this channel of communication open up is the best thing I've seen in forty-seven odd years, that we get some communication going. Thank you.
Anybody else have concerns, questions?
I think, uh, what we're looking at here is probably a little stronger golf advisory board situation. I had my doubts at first, but after listening and talking to a few people, and that it is looking better. Uh, my concern is, is basically how much money, we've been in a deficit for a number of years. How much are we willing to stick in on this every year? And are, do we have plans for the future? We're going to need some repair on the clubhouse, we're going to need, because this stuff is getting older, coming apart. Come up with a plan of what we're going to do in the future, so that when something happens, like a major expense, we're not blindsided by it. You know, maybe that's something in the advisory board, or a new group like this, and start looking into and passing that, and suggestions down. So, but it's, uh, like Lauren was saying, just to cut, cut it off clean, it hasn't been too successful, we're all in agreement with that. But it's like, we're looking for something that could be a success. Maybe this is the way to go, so.
Well, something better than nothing that I had for how many years.
And I think with golfers being comfortable, that they can, um, bring ideas forth, and something's going to be done about it. I think what we need to do is follow through on, and then if we're not going to change, um, what you request, I think we need to respond, why not? Don't just decide we're not going to do anything about what you're asking for and not reply. So, once again, it's two-way communication.
And if them suggestions are brought before the council, so they're aware of them, that's an important thing.
Is there, is there anything in here, I think, I remember reading it, so, there we go. Annually develops an operating budget and five-year capital improvement plan, covering all aspects of the golf course. Has that ever been done before? I mean, have we ever had, I mean, you were mentioning that, that in the future, what's going to happen. Has that ever been done before, where you have a five-year plan of, of what we're going, what we're, we're doing? I mean, I'm new, so I don't know, but.
We do a, a budget and a five-year plan, or we actually look at a seven-year plan every budget cycle. So every department does their budget for the year, and they have a seven-year capital improvement plan, um, you know, for equipment and, and that type of stuff, and they do that annually.
Okay, related to like the clubhouse, repairs, and all that kind of stuff, too, is that on?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Well, that should say seven years instead of five years in the job description, probably.
We typically look at the, at the five years, um, five years is a, it's easier to look at five years. The last two years are just kind of out there, because it's, it's really hard to gauge what you need, seven years, now, and your needs change, and things change.
I just don't want them to have to do something twice.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, we can change it, but we may change our, our capital improvement plan back to a five-year instead of a seven-year as well.
Anything else?
Tom Hoker, Haven Road, Little Falls, uh, the budget stuff, I just wanted to mention that, you know, it, it maybe doesn't make a bunch of money, but there's a lot of things that one of your best assets does. It, uh, community services, kids come out there to golf, about a hundred and twenty kids come out there to golf every summer at no charge. The Little Falls high school golf team comes out there and does their practicing and their rounds. rounds out there at no charge. Randy puts on, I don't know how many fundraiser tournaments, which are big, I think that's a big help to the city, I think he's probably got seven, eight, nine of them, that people raise money, and so, you know, a lot of stuff in the, in the figures, you don't see, you know?
Lucky Lindy.
Lucky Lindy brings like ten thousand people to Little Falls, I think.
So making that a charge kind of helps the golf course a little bit, but then it's also taking the money away from the school or, or community education. I know in past schools where I've taught, we've always had paid golf course fees for schools, that was part of our budget. So, I mean, I guess it doesn't, you're gonna pay at one end or the other. If, if we have to charge, you know, the kids at school to go out there, then it's, then we have to raise the budget at school, so we're not gaining a thing.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing the charge.
No, I'm, I'm saying...
It's a service, but they do.
Yeah.
Well, well, there is, it just isn't very much, right?
Right, the school, the school does pay.
Right, but it's just, it's not, it's not...
It's not much, but they do.
Well, I think, too, we need to, we need to capitalize more on the, the restaurant side of it. Um, you know, we, we need to have, not the specials or, or whatever, that would draw people in, you know, good food, good service, um, you know, that's gonna draw people, and I'm gonna go play golf, I'm gonna eat, you know, we're gonna make it a destination to go and do that. Um, which I don't, you don't see it, you know, and I think that's a, that's a plus that we need to start, start pulling in, that is a whole day atmosphere fund, food.
I think everyone would like to see that, and we've went over that a couple of times, the fact that the SBDC out of Brandon was trying to help Little Falls figure out how to get out of debt, where it wasn't costing money, and their suggestion, correctly, was to cut down your net, and you were...
Well, yeah, but you don't have to have, you know, but if you have just, you know, certain things that are there, and they're good, and you're advertising, that, you know, we've got specials this night, you know, so that people are aware of, of what you're doing, to attract people to come in.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad thing to take away.
Well, they used to have Sunday brunches out there.
Yeah, they had a lot of...
No...
I think, yeah, I think your, your, your very first point, that you guys are talking about changing that name, is gonna be the, the biggest start of it. You start, get the name changed, and get people to know that it's not a private, it's not a private course, but in their mind, it's not a private course, that it'll get people to come to the course. Once you get the people coming to the course, then you can see if it needs to have what kind of restaurant, or what kind of snack bar, or what is involved afterwards. It took years to get a liquor license out there, and when I first got to town, it was just beer, and you had to bring your own setups. And after men's league, not many people hung around, they did a little bit. But now, with the liquor license there, and the bar being there, the men's club on Wednesday nights, where they're sometimes till nine-thirty, nine o'clock at night, and they have everything in there. If you do that on a, if you get the outside people from different towns to come here and play golf on a Friday night coming through town, they may stay and have a dinner, have a few drinks. I mean, you have to get the people there, and to change that name is the first thing to get it.
Okay, Laurie?
I was just gonna ask, would it be better in the, back to Brad's question about the five-year plan, what if we just put that develops an operating budget and a capital improvement plan, and not put the years in there, would that be better? Whether it's a five, a seven, or a ten-year plan, and that's kind of dictated by our budget process?
That's a judgment.
Yes.
Yeah, I was saying to hold that judgment, I may do something with the name as well, may talk about municipal golf course operations, rather than identifying, identifying it in the judgment script, as in Little Falls, so we don't have to change it next year when we change the name. Now, the policies and procedures, I did, I would suggest you do adopt those, I mean, we're in the mayor, I almost mean the chairman. We could, you could amend those next year, first meeting of the year, and just, as a simple motion, so we get, get those in there, and then get those done, and get those set out, and get that part of them.
And can we, want to delete the...
Yeah, well, you can introduce it tonight, you can, and do whatever the next meeting, but technically, for all intents and purposes, yeah.
But to go on...
Get your liaison appointed, right? So we're ready to do that. That's what I was gonna say, if you're gonna delete, like Lauren was saying, we better have something in place right away. So, I'm, make a motion to delete, or put it before the council, and then initiate this whole new idea.
Sounds good. All right.
Great guy, got one more thing. On June sixth, we had the Little Falls Golf Advisory Tournament, and in the past, we've always had a team from the chamber, from the city council.
We're working on it.
All right, so we invited, so come on out, you four guys, come on out and play and have a good time.
Life's been all right.
Talking about make the, making the restaurant a viable operation, I've been, like I say, forty-five, forty-eight years here, and Bill Hubbard here, and then he ran it for one point in time, that's a tough call, that, that, I don't think that restaurant, I think it breaks even, makes a little bit of money, but if you guys got some ideas on how to make that viable, that would be great, but it's, it's a struggle. I mean, ever since I've been here, it's been a struggle. It would be great if it could become a viable operation, but like the name change probably might help some of that, because people would realize that, you know, it's not a private country club, and anybody can come out there and eat, but that's, that's how people struggle to make that a profitable thing.
Okay, sounds good. Moving on, Employee Enterprise, Employment Enterprise, Incorporated, NGA, EPA, grant assistance request.
Ma'am? Yeah, Laurie, I know, I should, Pam couldn't be here, but she can get the request.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
We have the application in front of you, as far as their interest in having the city come, uh...
Fiscal agent.
Fiscal agent for the, the grant application. I, I talked to Laurie, we've done this before, and Laurie was...
We, we have not, I mean, we've been fiscal agents within this, like, community development, you know, something that we have a direct relationship to. In this case, we really don't have a direct relationship with the EPIs, um, you know, and they, they've made this request, then, that we act as their fiscal agent, if they are awarded this grant. So I guess it's up to the council if it's something you want to do, but it's not anything you've done in the past.
Does it require us to do?
Um, I don't really know, because I haven't talked to her. My guess, typically when you're a fiscal agent, then we're responsible for accepting the grant, receiving the grant, accepting the grant, we hold the funds, and then we have to pay the bills as, you know, for whatever the purpose of their grant is, then we would have to cut checks and pay those, those invoices or pay those bills out of there. We have some communication with EPI to make sure that, you know, they're getting the value of whatever their invoices are, whatever, you know, rules that they're submitting. And then a, a report is typically submitted at the end of the grant, um, you know, to see that we've complied with all the rules and regulations, how the money's come in, and where we've spent it.
It's too bad, because I, you know, I know that they're financially struggling, because I know they got a lot of state dollars cut. If, if we can't do this, or don't do this, I hope there's another option for them, because to not be able to apply for grand dollars doesn't do you as a fiscal agent.
Did you talk about her timeline on this? I read it earlier, but, I mean, in fact, she's, she's got a, a real tight timeline, she's got like M and A, and probably why she's coming before us, you know, they get money from the county sold. And I asked her, I said, have you talked to the county about beating a fiscal agent? She's just squeezed with a timeline, and isn't on her agenda, and it isn't anything we can't do, we can't do it, but it's just something we haven't done. And I don't, I don't think we wanna get into habit of doing this for a local officer either, but...
I don't see a timeline, but I understand what you're saying, because if you do it for them, then you end up being fiscal agent for about ten different funds, and then that adds work to, on plates for our employees, so...
It would seem like the county would be a good fit, because, you know, it's, it's a county-wide agency, it's a county-wide organization. If I remember right, they also merged with Todd County.
Right.
But again, I mean, if that, if the council chooses to, that's, I'm fine with it.
Well, then, yeah, I, but I like what it's working with the disabled, and it provides them the opportunities for work. And if we get these people, um, working, learning some skills, and, and maybe get them into businesses, working, I mean, that's a plus, you know, for those guys.
And doesn't it have any audit ramifications? Because I know I was on the United Way, and we started applying fiscal agent, and got into some issues with their audits.
If, if it's federal funds, then, yeah, it could, if we have over a certain amount of dollars of federal funds, then it would require a single audit. But, you know, we have an audit anyhow, so unless it's federal funds, which I don't believe they are, it shouldn't have an audit.
Is there a fiscal agent cut on that grant?
I guess is not, I don't think it is. They typically don't pay for industry...
Yeah, sometimes it's a little...
Five percent or something.
Yeah, something like that. I know there was a, a group in Brandon called Community Action Agency of Corwin County, and they were a five-one-C-three, and they, they were fiscal, fiscal agent for just a ton, you know, every fundraiser that came through, the Y, and amateur hockey, and everybody else, it was fiscal agent through Community Action Agency of Corwin County, and that was great, because they, they, they received, I think, a percentage of some sort to pay for the processing that they had to do, so they...
Well, it takes time, you know, it's gonna take staff, so it's half-time to do it.
So there's no indication that the county isn't willing?
No, I don't think so, she just hasn't asked them, at this point. She said, we do receive some funding, but she said, tight timeline, I mean, all that, whether or not they're, if they just found out about this, I don't know. Just to get rid of the pros and cons, it's, it's hard to say no time, but it's hard to say yes.
If you said something that there are a lot of larger space along Highway Ten, is that in town or out of town? You know?
In town.
Yeah.
Could be right, what they're trying to get is between Pizza Ranch and, what is it, O'Reilly's?
Okay.
Used to be Fast and Old, they're in the back now. I think it looks pretty good that they're gonna get that away, they...
I think Fast and Old's moving out.
They're in back now.
I think they're moving out of there, too.
So would we be looking, are they looking for us to take action on this this evening, and do it come that fast?
I would assume they'll need it, because of the, the way this reads, they're applying for that NJPA grant, which is due the end of this month, so...
What's your feelings, Dan? What's your feelings?
If you, if you did it, I would do it one time only, but because of the tight timeline, and this is setting any kind of precedent, you're doing it, you're allowed to do it, and there's nothing that says you can't do it, you're trying to help their operation. It is in town, it's providing employment opportunities for people, and these, I mean, it's, there's a lot of things you can say for it, it's, it's, it's a tough call. If you say no, and, oh, Big Bad City, why did they say no? They do so many other things for so many others, and... There's, there's other sources, like, you know, the Camp Ripley Veterans Trail, we got some money in, and we went through Carol Anderson, you know, that's another, because they have the ability to do the same thing.
I, you know, I'm reading through this, and they're under a tight timeframe, I mean, can Regent Five themselves be a fiscal agent?
Regent Five can, I think that's important.
Yeah, and the NJPA is, is this the big one for that?
That's, that's one of the way I read the statement.
I mean, I mean, they mentioned servicing the Regent Five area, so, I mean, even more so than the county, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, if they're under, sometimes, lack of planning makes an emergency on somebody else's part, for them to have to not get the money, and I like what Dan said, you know, we can do a one-time deal, and then maybe direct them to the county or Regent Five.
So if we become a fiscal agent, how long does that tie us into? What year, or?
So we have the money spent, I'm sure.
And so if they have the money spent, they reapply the grant, and we wouldn't have to accept being the fiscal agent the next time around?
That's what I understand, but it's gonna come through, the money's gonna come through us, and once the money's spent, then, then we'll...
Well, like you said, Dan, if it's that type of timeline, you know, Regent Five, or no matter who you're talking, is gonna get together, meeting, and put it on the agenda, and say yes to this, before that, things got to be, that's my guess. So it sounds like it's us, and we don't have a chance to get it, to say yes to it.
The only thing is, we become the fiscal agent, we're responsible for how they spend that money, too. But if they choose to not spend it in an appropriate way, then that falls on our heads, you know? You know, they're saying, you know, yes, we're gonna do this, because they only have a few days or something, and then it backfires on us, we're gonna look like we're the bad ones in this deal. This, I know, and that, that's the problem with Big Bad City, I know, I think they're doing Tuesday.
How, what's the grand dollar, you know, what kind of dollar mark, even, we're looking at? Five thousand, thousand, ten thousand, fifty, hundred?
That's good, we don't know.
You know, if they got five grand, won't take them long to spend it, if we're gonna do this for five grand, or we do this for a hundred thousand, you know?
Yeah, normally, when you're, you're paying, when you're paying, and you're paying to an authorized vendor of some sort, or if you do have this, I suppose, potential, Frank was mentioning, I'm hoping that you can, you know, mitigate that as much as possible.
Well, it sounds like with the help of the grant, they can take care of the things that they need to, startup costs, so it sounds like they're gonna need more than the grant. So what I agree is that probably they use it for...
Use it pretty quick, right?
...one-time thing, or short-term.
Use it for the yearly use of the building, or...
It's not, it's got, we're given information, numbers, and timeline, and...
Or making decisions, or not too clear on anything, even the...
She's not here, but I... Very hopeful that the, you know, Satsack, or reason why she's not here, but just take the timeframe, and sure be nice if we can ask her what's going on.
All about, nothing's here, I feel like they're making the decision on, really no information.
So it's on the agenda for today? Or not on the agenda?
I think it is, on the menu. I had just talked to her late last week, or middle of last week, I told her, get us a letter in here, so I got someone to present at the council, once you're meeting, we can, but they can't be there, and they're like, no, you know, I'm not getting carried in the moment, or, you know...
Well, I, I can agree, and he agreed with you, too, like, you know, if this is, if this is really, really important to her, she would've been here to sell this, and if that is any indication of what we're gonna have to do with being a fiscal agent, with, you know, them getting, you know, the receipts or whatever it has to pay off, and stuff, you know, like, like Frank said, too, we may be having a problem with that. And we have more of a headache there, the help that we'd be giving.
So it's a consensus, we're gonna put it on the agenda, or not put it on the agenda?
I would take so. Not with more, of more, we need more information.
Well, whoever makes a motion for the agenda, if they want it on, throw it on? If not?
Yeah, certainly. Hundred and sixty-two individuals, six staff, like, don't wanna leave that hanging, but I can't even ask how many of them are here, you know, in Little Falls, and we're talking about, you know, why? Yeah, the bottom's near there, we don't have that much information, so it comes to be a solid decision.
There's something numbers at the bottom, can we get some of that information? We've got six minutes, and we're reviewing. Land donation, Morningstar?
I'm gonna jump past that, and we go right to the...
Okay.
And next, with your old cable...
Park Lot, Park Lot update. Everything was going good for about a day, until we started digging in the park lot. We were going to start removing some of those catch basins or vaults out there, dug down two feet, and we started seeing water coming out of the ground. So we investigated a little bit more what's that was happening, and found a leak, um, right on the outside of the manhole, right over here, was a water... And we found a leak, um, right on the outside of the manhole, right over here, was the water main was, was leaking out. This water main, this fourteen-inch, um, is cast iron pipe. It's original to when this was a water plant. Um, you'll also notice, um, we have fourteen-inch pipe running, see right over here, coming along this way, um, as well as down here. Both of these are basically original when this was started. We've got a number of piping in through here that, uh, basically occurred when this was the water plant, as well as when this was, uh, the water tower over there. Um, what makes me the most nervous is that we didn't even touch this and we started seeing it leaking.